Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is December 13th, 2022. It's great to see a full house. We wish we had this every week. But maybe if we let the band play every week, they'd come. So, good idea. Please join us for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Amen. I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council, TB operator Mike Spironi. Mike, thanks for your assistance and welcome back. He's waving up there. Okay. Well, I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher for a motion to approve the minutes.
Well, Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for December the 6th. I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second? Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? You're none? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Absinthe.
Mayor Lehner.
Yes, okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda by adding for consideration a resolution appointing trustees to the Miami Valley Research Park Association Board of Trustees?
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Take a voice count, voice call. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner.
Okay. Let's see. Proclamations, special presentations. We do have a couple tonight, for sure. First, we are going to start off with a certification of recognition to the Alter High School Band, the 2022 Band of America Class A National Champions. Not just state, but national, which is awesome. Who is ready to read the proclamation?
Can I, ma'am?
Okay.
We have a certificate of recognition and congratulations as hereby presented to Alder High School Marching Band. The city of Kettering is honored to recognize the Alder High School Marching Band as the 2022 Band of America Class A National Champions. Winning the 2022 Bands of America Class A Championship exemplifies the dedication, hard work, and commitment exhibited by these talented students. This achievement has brought distinction and honor to Alder High School and the Kettering community. It is with great pleasure that the city council and the Kettering community congratulate the Alder High School Marching Band on this exceptional accomplishment and extends our best wishes for continued success. It is presented on this 13th day of December of 2022 by Mayor Lehner.
Okay, thank you. Could Todd Tucker come down to the podium? I'd like to present. This sign will be put up at the entrances to the city, along with all the athletic signs you see all the time. It's great to have the band recognized as well. And so I will give you that. This, I think, is a copy for you to have up at the school.
At the school, yes.
Thank you. Could we just have just the band members stand up so we can recognize you? Okay, you can sit down. I have several children who went to Alter, and the band was not nearly as large as it was now. I think there were 10 of you, something like that. So, you've come a long, long way. That's great. Congratulations. Let's see now. We do have a presentation by Don Kirchner, volunteer administrator, who will be making a presentation tonight about the Christmas Day at Pollen Farm. Don, where are you? There you are. And I think you have Santa Claus with you, but better known as Bill Bradley. An elf, an elf.
Yes.
You're Santa Claus in Kettering.
Yeah. Thanks for having us out today. We wanted to give a brief overview of the traditional Pollen Farm Christmas coming up on Christmas Day. This event continues to be free, thanks to our sponsors, our main sponsor being Day Air Credit Union. We'll have a variety of food, pictures with Santa, a variety of elves to help throughout the day. This is made possible, too, by over 40 community volunteers that help set up, clean up, and make magic happen the day of Christmas. And so we invite all of you out to celebrate with us, everybody here and watching to celebrate with us. This is really an event to celebrate friendship, fellowship, and remember the reason for the season. So, please come join us and have a wonderful holiday season.
We'll be there rain, snow, shine, cold. We're there always open, and we'll invite each one of you, the council and the mayor, to please attend.
It is supposed to be cold. Plenty of hot chocolate.
It is December.
Yes.
Thanks so much. And, you know, all the years that I've been around Kettering, I never had a chance to go to Pollen Farm because I usually had like 22, 25 people at my house for Christmas Day. But last year, I had far fewer numbers, and I just said, heck, we're going to go to Pollen. And so we went over there, and it was, it was really lovely. I mean, you guys just do a super, super job. I don't know if you've got the same Santa coming this year, do you?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
He was incredible.
Yes.
Absolutely, best Santa I've ever seen.
And we have the same Easter prize candy.
Great. All right, well, thank you so much, and thank you for doing this every year. Don, you're newer to the game, but Bill's been doing it as long as I know.
Picking up well.
Yeah.
I have a good mentor, so.
Well, thank you both so much. We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening. I do, however, invite anyone who would like to come down and address the council on any of the issues, the legislation that is going to be presented tonight. This is your time to do that. If anyone wishes to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, they may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address council this evening on legislation? Did I see you point to yourself, Don? Okay. Welcome to our former mayor, Don Patterson, here's in the front room.
Oh, this is going to be crazy.
We'll give everyone a minute to...
Quietly leave.
They're leaving very quietly. They're doing a good job.
They're on the money until they get downstairs.
Yeah, that's when they start to...
So, you don't want to know why I saw Penny today, then, huh? You're not interested. You're not interested in my social life. All you care about is business. You could have said, so you could have said, so where are you and Penny hanging out?
Your Honor, I do have an ordinance in second reading this evening to provide for the table of organization, position classification plan, compensation plan, and pay schedules and rules and regulations pertaining to the conditions of work, and supplemental benefits for the employees of the city of Kettering, Ohio, and to repeal ordinance number 4372-21. It is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Schwerderman, one of the very last times.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance in second reading that essentially adopts the personnel ordinance for the city of Kettering for calendar year 2023. The personnel ordinance is amended to reflect a 2.25% across-the-board increase to our pay scales that is consistent with our collective bargaining agreements. It also implements a number of items that have been discussed at our last council meeting as well as in the public, I'm sorry, in the budget workshop. So again, a passage of this ordinance tonight will allow us to pay our employees on January 6th. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Schwerderman? Seen none? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
And we move on to resolutions?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a resolution this evening authorizing an amendment to the annual action plan for program year 2019 to reallocate funds. The estimated cost is $596,568. Those funds are available, requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second? Mr. Schwerderman? No, I'm sorry, Mr. Robelart?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The city of Kettering was awarded a little bit over $596,000 in community development block grant funds under the CARES Act, or what we call CDBG-CV. Staff is recommending some changes to those funds, basically reallocating those slightly, primarily to do two things. One is modify our housing rehab program to accommodate for air quality improvements and upgrades to HVAC systems, and also to provide for public facility improvements, which may be used for building some office space for our senior service coordinator. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Robelart? Please call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for demolition of properties located at 3415 Sagamon Avenue and 2923 Robin Road in Kettering. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr.... I'm sorry. Mr. Robelart?
Thank you, Your Honor. These two homes, 2415 Sagamon and 2923 Robin Road, are being demolished due to nuisance abatement. FCS was the low bidder on these two demolitions with a total cost of $38,525. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Seen none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for design services for the phrase pavilion. Estimated cost is $93,775 and is requested by the Parks and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Schwerderman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This will be the first of many resolutions to follow in January related to the operation of the phrase pavilion. This particular resolution allows us to receive quotes for our design services for the upcoming season. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We should have come up with some really tough ones, throw you right... Now we think of it. Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. This is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Schwerderman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be the appropriation legislative resolution for 2023. This is the end product of your budget workshop that was held last week. So this will appropriate all the financial numbers related to that budget, again, so that we can operate in 2023. I would like to take a minute here and go over a few of the items on the budget, and you will recognize these slides from your budget workshop held last week. The 2023 budgeted operating margin is almost $2 million. Now, the operating margin for the city of Kettering is defined as current year revenues exceeding the current year expenditures. The difference then goes into our fund balance, which allows us to fund our capital improvement program. We do have significant COVID-related funding in the budget for 2023 and for 2022, and as you know, ARPA was about $13.7 million. That was utilized in 2022 to fund public safety payroll. That $13.7 million savings in our general fund will then be utilized for capital equipment, capital outlay, and community programs, as was defined in previous council workshops. Our income tax revenues for 2023 are budgeted at $54.3 million, which is a slight increase over 2022. You recently, this evening, passed the personnel ordinance, which will add four full-time positions and reflect a reduction of almost 14 part-time positions. We did include in our operating budget for 2023 approximately $543,000 in additional expenses related to the higher cost of supplies and materials due to inflation. Our capital improvement is budgeted at almost $17 million. We anticipate our general fund balance decreasing by $3 million in 2022 and $4 million in 2023. Again, that decline will be for the purchase of capital improvement items. This chart shows our general fund available balance and the trend over the last several years. The maroon portion of each year is what is essentially required by the Governate Finance Officers Association as a minimum balance, and for us, that is roughly three months. The light blue is the difference, that is our excess over that limit. And as you can see, we have a steady balance there in that excess amount. Our income tax revenues, again, show a very slight increase, a little over 2% for 2023, and we are reflecting, although we're meeting forecasts for 2022, our forecast was below the 2021 level. This pie chart simply shows you where we spend our money, and a little between 45 and 50%, 50% is sent on our public safety, police, and fire, and dispatch. Then, a large portion of our general fund money is transferred to other operations, our street department and our capital improvement program. Our personnel expenditures were deeply impacted by the ARPA process in 2022, and that's why you see the almost 31% decline in personnel expenditures in 2022. On the next chart, we'll take out the ARPA, and you can see that it's a very normal trend line for personnel expenditures when you take out the impact of ARPA. Our operating expenditures on the next slide show what you would expect to see in operating expenditures. While it's only roughly an eight to $10 million item across the board for the city, there is some fluctuation within that range, mostly because of grant dollars that come in, whether it be COVID-related or other items. Our capital outlay is our rolling stock, our equipment, our cars, and trucks. And you can see in 2023, we're spending about $1 million of the city's general fund dollars on that, and then we've allocated $1.7 million out of the ARPA funds towards our capital outlay. On the next slide, you get just a quick listing of some of those items, whether it be marked cruisers, unmarked police cars, our street pickup trucks, as well as some staff vehicles, and then things that, equipment that we operate with in our facilities department, such as lifts. On the next slide, we see some of the outlay items that relate to ARPA, and those are the bigger things, the fire engines, the really large salt trucks, if you will, from our street department. Those items have been highlighted or have been allocated to our ARPA funds. The city continues to carry a very low amount of debt. We are well below the margin or allowance for debt for a city of our size. Our most recent debt was the police department renovation, which was roughly $8 million, and then we have about 2/3 of our fire department debt left at $10.4 million. The majority of the fire department debt is funded by the EMS run fees that the city charges, and our debt service for 2023 is right around $2.8 million. As I mentioned, we're almost at $17 million in capital improvement. Capital improvement is buildings and roads, and on the screen tonight, we have a listing of all of the major projects that will be taking place. Of interest is Golf Club Estates, where we are allocating some ARPA funds for some drainage programs in that area, as well as finishing Phase III of the Rosewood Arts Center improvements and other miscellaneous items on the slide. That is a five-and-a-half-minute version of the over-one-hour version you received last week. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we take any questions, I would just like to comment that what you saw here tonight, five-and-a-half minutes, is just absolutely the tip of the iceberg in the budget process. It's something that started way back in September, I believe, was when the finance department started working on it, and I suspect maybe even before that. We do have Nancy Gregory sitting here, Finance Director, and Kelly O'Connell. I don't think I was here much.
No.
They're two who spearheaded this, but there was a whole big team working on it. Thank you so much. As someone who can't even balance my own checkbook, I have deep, deep respect for someone who can make that. Now I can balance a checkbook, I just don't spend anything. But, but thank you so much, and really from the bottom of my heart, that's such an integral part, it's one of the key jobs, function of the city council. We're happy to be able to present you another really sound budget, and I can't leave Mark out in that process. As city manager, that is, I would say, probably your number-one function, and you do a darn good job of it. You have done a darn good job of it, just like everything else you do. At this point in our agenda, we're going to veer away a little bit from the standard agenda.
No, we haven't.
We got a vote.
I know, I know. There will be things mixed in here that we will be taking care of, so don't worry. But... So, we do have... You want to tell me what we're doing next?
They're appointing you to the...
No, we're voting first on this resolution. We're voting on a resolution.
I'm going to call on Mark, who has the final resolution.
No, we're voting.
No, we're not ready.
He's going to talk about it. I believe, who is up to read it?
We have to vote on the budget.
Previous one.
On the budget, if I'm sorry.
We're out of control.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. And we do have one final resolution. Who's reading?
Mr. Duke.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I've been waiting for. I have a resolution appointing Peggy Lehner and Matthew H. Grieson to the Miami Valley Research Park Association Board of Trustees, recommended by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Take away, Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor. As indicated earlier in the meeting, a motion was passed to add this resolution to the agenda. This resolution will appoint Mayor Lehner and our new incoming city manager, Matt Grieson, to the board at the Miami Valley Research Park, replacing the previous appointments, which was Mayor Patterson and myself. Mayor Lehner will immediately become a member of the board, and Mr. Grieson will become a member on January 1st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Before you move, go on, I just want to... I said we were going to be a little bit out of schedule here, and I think one of the biggest things to be out of schedule is appointing someone to a committee before he is actually sworn in as city manager. But I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Matt Grieson, who is our new city manager as of January 1st, and he is here within the audience today.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Duke. Appreciate it. Okay. We will now move on to ordinances in first reading.
Your Honor, we do have an ordinance to enact Chapter 179 of the Codified Ordinance creating the Sustainability Committee, and it is requested by the mayor and the city council, and this is first reading.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
It's first reading.
Yeah, but okay, I thought we still... That concludes that. I will, at this point, call on...
Steve is going to give an explanation.
Aren't you doing your certification? Okay.
Or, in first reading?
We are a little out of order here. Steve, you have an explanation to give for this one?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The ordinance in first reading that was just read will enact Chapter 179 of the Codified Ordances of the city of Kettering, which will create a new sustainability committee. This is a new advisory committee that's being created at the direction of city council as a result of their March 2022 strategic planning retreat. The members will consist of twelve Kettering residents, one member of which will be a high-school-age student, and they will be appointed to staggered three-year terms. The committee will be charged with a number of responsibilities, all centered around improving the concepts of sustainability, and then recommending to city council and city staff modifications to city departments to enhance their efforts to improve sustainability. There'll be a lot of coordination with neighboring jurisdictions to acknowledge improved sustainable practices, and also host events, and any other thing that falls under the umbrella of sustainability, this committee will be charged with looking at and making recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any question? Seen none, call the roll. No, it's first reading. Got it. Okay. All right. Saying goodbye is never easy. Saying goodbye to someone who is the heart and soul of an institution is really difficult. But tonight, we are going to start the goodbye process. Few events taking place during the week, not everything that we're going to say goodbye is going to happen tonight. There'll be other things coming. But we wanted to start tonight to recognize Mark Schwerderman for the years and years and years, 34, of service. I was thinking today earlier, there are many members of the staff that weren't born when you were hired. And he's a young guy. He just started here in, you were 20, 21? 23. Or was that three years old? And served in the Finance Department first, and then in the... And served in the finance department first, and then in the city manager's office, the Assistant City Manager for, I don't know how long, I should have looked up all this stuff ahead of time, but I figured Mark can tell us. How many years were you Assistant City Manager?
I worked in the finance department for about 11 years, and then six years as an assistant, and 16 years.
Yeah. I was privileged to serve on city council during his, most of that six years, and he was a delight to work with back then, nothing much has changed. He was clearly rising to be our Assistant City Manager. At the time, I don't know if you all remember Jeff Hoagland or not, Jeff and Mark were the twosome that were inseparable, and still are very best of friends. Saw Jeff just last night, and it just made me realize, you know, what quality of people have passed through the doors of this, this city. And it's just awesome to think about. At this point, I'm going to call on Shawna Kaczynski, who is going to give us any certifications and petitions, and maybe a little more.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening, but at this time, I would like to thank Mr. Schwerderman for his years of service and dedication to our city, and wish you all the best in your upcoming retirement.
Thanks, Shawna. We're going to let Mark talk a little bit here and give his very final community update, and just take it away, Mark.
Thank you, Your Honor, my last community update. We will start with the holiday tour of lights. We are still accepting submissions at our volunteer office at 296-2433, so if you've gone above and beyond, please let us know, and we'll let the community know and stop by your house for your holiday decorations. We do have modified schedules for our administrative offices during the holidays. The offices will be closed on Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, the 26th, as well as Monday, January the 2nd. Because the holidays are falling on the weekends, there will be no delay in rumpkey trash service during the holidays. From a leaf collection standpoint, after many weeks of telling you where we are, tonight I will tell you, we are complete. So we have finished our rounds through the city, and encourage our residents that if they still have yard debris or leaves, they can take those to the Montgomery County Solid Waste District on In Crete Lane. Speaking of Montgomery County, they have changed their hazardous household waste, household hazardous waste program. They have gone into a different hour structure. So in the winter hours, November through February, they will be open 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the first Tuesday of every month. Then when they transition into the summer hours, March through October, they will be open every Tuesday from 1:00 to 7:00. You've already heard all about the Christmas Day gathering, but just a reminder, Poland Farm on Christmas from 1:00 to 4:00. That's all I have for your honor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Schwerderman? I'm not hearing any. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, excuse me, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. I'm sorry. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council?
At least one.
Who are you?
Seriously, you didn't think I was going to say anything, really? Those have been dashed.
Could we have your name, please, sir?
Oh, sorry. Don Patterson, 715 Stanbridge Drive, Kettering, Ohio.
Oh, thank you.
Peggy alluded to the fact that she had the opportunity to serve with Mark on council, and Peggy and I were elected to council originally together and served eight years. Peggy went on to state legislature and senate, I stayed around, and spent 16, 16 years as mayor. During that tenure, nobody thought I'd get through this, I know that, but, I know, hell no. I had the opportunity to spend 16 years as mayor with, with Mark as, as my city manager. As mayor and city manager, if you don't get along, your, your city's got problems. It's not to say that we didn't have our moments when one of us, depending upon whose offices we were in, had to get up and close the door, because we did have those, those discussions. But both of us were always pulling on the same, same end of the rope. We wanted what was best for this, this community. And sometimes, to do that, you need to, to have some, some discussions on, on what to do. And Mark was a consummate leader. He, he was a consummate team player. And the one thing, excuse me, when I left, that I, I said throughout my, my career, especially as mayor, was it's a team effort. Anything that gets done in this community is done because of this Kettering team. It isn't the mayor, it isn't the city manager, it isn't the director, it isn't council, it's everybody that's involved. And we, as a community, are better from Mark having been here for, for 34 years, but in particular, for the 16 years I was mayor, and the year that Peggy's been mayor, and you will be missed, you have some damn big shoes to fill. But it was a great time. I know Mark enjoyed this, we had a lot of good times, we had good golf outings, we had good dinners, we might have had a couple drinks over the time, and I wish you the best of luck. I know your wife Mary's here, and daughter Megan, and Theo, although Theo's looking a little tired right now. So thank you, Mark, for, for what you gave this community, thank you what you gave to, to the, the employees here, and thank you for, for being part of this great, great Kettering team.
Thank you, thank you, Don, and it wouldn't be a Kettering event without your presence. So thank you very much for being here with us tonight. We're going to have one more proclamation before we have other speakers, anyone else who wants to say a word is welcome to do so. But at this point, I'm going to call on Steve Bergstreser to read a proclamation.
Mr. Schwerderman, I know you do not like surprises. I learned that in working with you for the last, the, umpteen number of years, but just go with this for tonight. Your Honor, I have a proclamation. Whereas today, we honor Mark Schwerderman for his service and dedication to the Kettering community for the past 34 years. And whereas Mark Schwerderman began his service to the city of Kettering in 1989 in the tax division, and was later appointed to serve as Kettering's sixth city manager in 2006. And whereas, because of Mark Schwerderman's leadership, the Kettering community has experienced tremendous growth, including the modernization and upgrades to the Kettering Police Department and all Kettering fire stations, expansion at the Miami Valley Research Park and Kettering Business Park, welcome new businesses such as Amazon, Life Connection of Ohio, Community Tissue Services, Kettering Health and Alternate Health Solutions, which has made Kettering a premier destination for growing companies and innovations. And whereas, Mark Schwerderman has been involved in many initiatives that enriched the lives of residents and business owners, including the expansion of pickleball courts, revitalization of bike paths, implementation of micro-enterprise loans for small business owners, and ensuring our parks and community have plenty of trees to enhance the scenic beauty of our community while respecting its natural habitats. And whereas, the city of Kettering acknowledges the work, the foresight, and the unwavering grit, Mark Schwerderman has given not only for the betterment of his, this community, but the entire region without hesitation or complaint. And whereas, the Kettering community expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Mary Schwerderman, Megan Baker, Adam Schwerderman, Michael Schwerderman, and Barb Schwerderman for sharing Mark with an entire city for the past 34 years, for supporting his unique career that requires more time than most, and for giving him the grace necessary to be a successful, principled, incredible leader, and...
Whereas the character, patience, and kindness that Mark Schwerderman exemplifies were instrumental in making his family feel proud, loved, and always top priority, the same way everyone with whom he comes in contact feels, loved, proud, and top priority. And as a family, a staff, and a community, we are so fortunate and grateful for his example.
Now, therefore, I, Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the city of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, do hereby proclaim December 31st, 2022, to be Mark Schwerderman Day in the city of Kettering. And on behalf of city council, city administration, and the residents of Kettering, would like to express our sincerest gratitude to Mark Schwerderman for his service to the Kettering community, and offer our best wishes for a well-deserved retirement filled with good health and happiness. Signed with the seal of the city of Kettering on the 13th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2022. Congratulations, Mark. You want to come on down and give a picture?
Good evening, Mayor Lehner and members of council. What a ride this has been. Over the last 34 years, my family and I have enjoyed, have enjoyed countless positive experiences from being associated with this amazing community of Kettering. I have been blessed to work alongside exceptionally dedicated public servants at both the staff and council level. As a city manager, I have developed relationships with employees, fellow city managers, volunteers, business leaders, and residents, and I will cherish those for years to come. I have experienced firsthand the advancement and improvement of the Kettering community during the last 30-plus years, and I have to admit, I am very proud to have been, have had a small hand in the successes of this community. If you will allow me, and frankly, you have no choice, because I haven't gone over my five minutes of public comment, I would like some time to recognize and thank those who have had a hand in making Kettering better during my career. That's all I can do, or I'll just lose it. Thank you to my lovely and wonderful wife, Mary. She has been supportive of my role as a public servant from the very beginning in 1989. She did not hesitate, well, maybe she did, for a second or two. When I came home one night and told her in 1999 that we had to move to Kettering, I had to go back to school to get my master's. She simply supported me and took care of our three young children while I worked a few extra hours and spent a few evenings for three years on a college campus. Go Flyers. She has been everything to me during this journey. My career successes are because of her dedication to our family and this community. And I'm not turning around.
Oh, go ahead.
To my children, Megan, Adam, and Michael, thank you for understanding. I missed a few things, sorry for that. You endured, you endured some added community pressures, being my children. I am very proud of how you handled the situation and the adults that you have become. To my parents, they taught me so much about community, what it means to be a part of it. They volunteered, they led, they cared. I guess it rubbed off. Thanks, Mom. I know you're watching on Channel 6 right now. I love you. To my mentors, thank you. Specifically, Steve Hughesman, Don Vermillion, and Tom Nicolai. I could go on and on about these three, but I will simply say that I would not have had the opportunity nor the confidence to pursue a career in city management without their guidance and motivation. To my fellow city managers, thank you. I have enjoyed our working together, our playing together, and our becoming friends. I have leaned on you. I appreciate that you took my calls. To former Mayor Patterson, thank you for taking a chance and working side-by-side with me for so many years. We agreed, we disagreed, we worked hard, and you never lost sight of what the community Mayor Lehner, members of council, thank you for your support, your leadership, and your friendship. I know that you will take fine care of this community. And Tony, don't worry, I'll still need some iced tea. To the staff, thank you. You are often referred to as the best. Believe it, you are. Nothing is possible without your commitment, dedication, and love for the Kettering community. To Amy, Shawna, Anna, Mary, Amy, and Steve, you have been a wonderful office family. I have enjoyed every day being with you in the trenches. You made the worst situations bearable and the best situation a party. Thank you. I will be, I will miss being with you on a daily basis. To Greg and Al, thank you. Kettering is home. I look forward to my time as a resident. My, my family and I thank this community for their support over the last 34 years. Kettering is home because the government cares for their community, and the community cares for their government. God bless you, and thank you.
We do have one final item of business to take care of, and that's council reports. What would help them to be, and we could also say that was, so I think we will start with that.
Well, I'm not going to get all teary-eyed, I'm going to just say, see ya in the neighborhood, brother. So, his service just goes to another place, I think, and so I'm, I'm not worried about, Mark. He has done an exceptional job, and he will be missed, but I'll, I'll still see him around, so. My report, ma'am... My report, ma'am, I do want to highlight real quick. I, I was at Town and Country this week, and there were a bunch of entrepreneurs. So I'll steal a little bit of Tony's thunder of shopping Kettering. It was great to see these young kids out there making their products, talking about their products, and selling their products. And so I uplift whoever put that together. We're starting our kids out at, I talked to a little five-year-old about what they were doing. So what a great effort, just in time for Christmas and things to buy.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Well, first of all, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all my colleagues and staff and residents and the folks here in the, in the chamber. Me, I've been working with Mark for 15 years. I don't have 16 years or 35 years or whatever. Mine, mine is 15 years. But in addition to being on council, Mark and I have shared some things, working together at church or in service clubs we belong to and also the Monday Night Golf League. So I've got to know Mark fairly well outside of council chambers and, and in here. I'm not going to try to top what the mayor has said about Mark's accomplishments and what the proclamation said. All you have to do is read community periodicals or the Dayton Daily News. You can see the history of Mark Schwieterman and what, what a job. So I'm not going to top that. But I do have one major accomplishment that no one's written about that, that I've seen Mark Schwieterman accomplish. And that is, he got rid of the dreaded slice in golf. So if you know anything about golf, you know, the slice is a hard thing to... Mark plays in the Monday League, as I mentioned, and he worked pretty hard on getting rid of that slice. And, and on, there's one hole, number seven, where he, he has told me that, you know, he's a left-hander, so he has to tee that ball off to the right, way out to the right. Well, but way out to the right next to tee is a pond. And Mark has hit several balls into that pond. But he worked really hard on getting rid of that slice. He was very persistent. And he became and is the best golfer in our Monday League and possibly playing with you, Chip, out at Wonka Grove. He might be one of the best out there. But that same persistence to excel at golf and get rid of that slice is what he did to become the very best city manager in Ohio or one of the best city managers in Ohio, I'll say that. So Mark, thanks for all you've done for the city. Stay young at heart, keep in spirit, keep hitting the ball straight, and enjoy your retirement. And finally, I'll end it with shop Kettering. That's all I have.
Mark, I just want to thank you for all your good work at the city. You've done an amazing job everywhere. We meet people, my husband and I, from Ohio. They say how well-run Kettering is, and that is really due in large part to your work and the whole Kettering city staff. So thank you for everything you've done. Very well done. And I just want to wish everyone in Kettering a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Being this is our last council meeting of the year, I, I want to encourage all our residents to have a safe and happy holiday season, and I hope our business owners and operators had a, had a good and prosperous 2022. I've got some comments about Mark, and I apologize for reading them because I didn't want to butcher it. So as a Kettering citizen, I thank you for all your years of outstanding service. As a councilperson, a sincere thank you for your patience and even-temperedness in answering all the questions posed by this rookie councilperson over the past year. Lastly, I think it's important to recognize the high standards of your ethical behavior, leadership, and respect you have earned from the staff, council, citizens, and from other municipalities in what I call the greater Kettering area and throughout the state. And on behalf of the entire Scott family, we wish you well in whatever and wherever your retirement takes you in the next chapter of your life. Thank you so much.
If there's anything I've learned over the past year, it's that a room full of people talking about him is Mark's worst nightmare. So it's been a pleasure for the past year. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Finally, Bruce. Thank you, your honor. I've had the privilege of actually working with Mark his entire career in the city of Kettering. I'm 36 years, he's 34. And I've worked with three different city managers, Mr. Walker, Mr. Hughesman, and of course, with Mark. And each city manager brings to the community a different style of leadership. Some were more bold, some were not quite as bold. But leadership is, is something that a city manager has to have if the community is going to thrive. And one of the characteristics, one of the leadership characteristics that we try to teach in the Kettering Leadership Academy, one of the five, is called model the way. And I can't think of any person that I know in this community that does a better job of modeling the way than Mark Schwieterman. Whether it's a Kettering issue, whether it's a neighborhood issue, whether it's a local, regional, state, whatever, Mark has been absolutely solid in the way he approaches problems and the way he pitches in and gets the job done. I, I remember, you know, things, things like our Make a Difference Day, things like a resident that had garbage problems. Mark was out there helping people to resolve these. And he modeled the way for others to follow. That's what a good leader does. We're going to hear a lot, Mark, between now and the end of the month with various activities about your Kettering contributions. But I want to just mention a few of your regional and state contributions because they often get overlooked. And we started First Suburbs in 2005, Peggy, is that right? I think, about that time. And Mark became city manager in 2006. Is that right? And right away, when we needed help with First Suburbs to not only be a champion of it, but to help us with the finances and the books and managing that side of it, Mark never flinched. When Peggy was leadership of that group, when I was the leadership of that group, it was absolutely no doubt that, that Mark was there to help First Suburbs, which is 12 communities that surround the Kettering community, the Dayton area. And Mark went to virtually every First Suburb meeting, every monthly meeting that he could. He's the only city manager that went to all of these meetings. I think Norm from Oakwood probably would be second. But Mark, the only time you missed is when you had other obligations or you were out of town. And you know, other, the other 20 or 30 elected officials in that room every month knew that Mark Schwieterman was modeling the way. And they would go back to their communities and talk to their council people. Because, hey, you know, the Kettering manager was at our, you know? Makes a big difference. And that's why this community has such a fabulous reputation, partly because of the work that Mark did to model the way with First Suburbs. The other example I would give, he served as on the board of directors and then, last year, the president of the Ohio Municipal League. That responsibility obviously had a lot to do with coordinating their efforts. But Mark often would go to Columbus and testify on behalf of cities throughout the state of Ohio on issues that we needed to deal with. And it wasn't just Kettering issues. He was modeling the way for all the cities in front of our legislature, and he did an outstanding job. So I guess all I want to say, Mark, is, is you have just been an example of what leadership is all about. This community is better off for you for the work you've done, not locally, not just locally, but throughout the community as well. I, I wish you and Mary, the kids, the grandkids, all the best. You've earned it. You've got them back now. Put them to work, okay? It's been a blessing for me, I know for the community. And finally, happy holidays to everybody. Mark, enjoy the family. Thank you again. Bless you. That's all I got, your honor.
Thank you, Bruce. I think I'm going to give anyone the opportunity to speak who wants to speak. You've got a, we're having a party for Mark next week, and friends and family will be there. So you might want to reserve your comments. But if there's anyone who wants to speak here tonight, feel free to come down before I close up the meeting. So anyone wants to say anything further? Okay. Well, I'm just going to say, there's more to come, Mark. Do I have a surprise for you tomorrow? But with that, I think I'm going to wish our citizens a very, very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I guess we weren't, aren't together until after that point. But be safe, have fun, and praise the Lord. Thank you very much. After your, let's see, I'm sorry. Being no further business to come before city council, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be January 10th, 2023, and this meeting is adjourned.